Good evening, welcome to National City School Board of Education regular meeting for March 14th. Happy Pi Day. Happy Pi Day. Yay. So we do have a quorum of the board, so we will start with pledge of allegiance, which tonight is from Ms. Shanika McDaniel's kindergarten class at Ira B. Jones.
(audience) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is in one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, and now I'll take a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, so the agenda is approved, and we will move straight to April Dockery with good news.
Good evening, Board. Good evening Superintendent. Thank you for this opportunity to share some amazing and awesome good news in Asheville City Schools for the month of March. This year, we had eighty students from Asheville City Schools that made all district band, and they performed at Western Carolina in early February. performed at Western Carolina in early February. The Asheville City Schools bands placed more students in the district bands than any other school system in western North Carolina. Nine students made all state band in Asheville City Schools, the largest number of kids of any school in any part of this part of the state. The all-state band members will meet again and perform in late April for the state competitions in Greensboro, and it is my understanding that May Robertson is the first Monford North Star student to ever make the all western North Carolina band. Is she here tonight? If any of these nine performers are here, including May, will come up real quick. We'll take a quick picture with the band, with the board. Come on up. Congratulations.
Good job, guys.
Family members, feel free, you could come take pictures too, it's totally fine. While they're taking pictures, you can step down. We also, thank you. It's also important to note that the Asheville High School Wind Symphony applied with recordings from 2022 to perform at the National Concert Band Festival at the Carnegie Hall, and was just accepted to perform there in March of 2024. This gives the band a year to accept the invitation and organize the trip for this amazing performance, and we are so proud of them as well. Science Olympiad. If Ms. Ross will come on up and join me. Monford North Star Academy placed second in the region in the 2023 Science Olympiad competition. The Monford North Star Academy varsity team placed first, woohoo, in the solar system competition, crave the wave competition, and bridge competition. They came in second in the planet competition. The school's junior varsity team ranked first in the bio process lab competition, plant competition, planet competition, rocks and minerals competition. There's a lot of competitions that they just keep winning. Green generation competition, the forestry competition, and the flight competitions. Congratulations if you guys would come on up. Good job, Alex. Way to go, team. The Monford North Star Academy Science Olympiad teams will now head off to the state competition on April the 22nd at NC State University in Raleigh. Ms. Ross, would you like to add a few things?
Yes, y'all hear me? Yeah. No, we've been doing this at Monford for a couple of years now, and we skipped COVID year. I took a break for that because it was all virtual, but since we've been back, last year we ended up placing first in the region, ended up going to states last year, and we ended up at 22nd in the entire state. So that felt really good to do that. And then in one event, which was flight, we ended up first in the entire state. So that was pretty exciting for last year. And this year, we've already started practicing, we've got our state team ready to go, and we'll see how we do. But thank you for y'all's support. Thank Sheena Baggett for supporting us always. And I have many, many coaches to thank. I thank Chris Moore, she's our eighth grade science teacher, Lexi Low, she's the seventh grade science teacher. We have Tom House, we have Steve Sarnie, we also have Jim Tracy and Allison Gooding. And they all volunteer their time to this after school, and I'd really like to thank them for really encouraging these kids to be a part of this for so long, and it just gets better and better, and it's a lot of fun. So, thank you everybody for your support. I'm so proud of you guys.
Next, we would like to celebrate the work of Isaac Dixon Elementary School. We have a new, one of our newest members of staff, Ms. Tammy Ramsey. Congratulations. If you have some students with you, you can come on up. They have been ranked first, number one, first in fundraising school in the state of North Carolina by raising a grand total of thirty-one thousand four hundred and twenty-six dollars in the Jump Rope for Heart Challenge. What an amazing team effort and positive impact that you've made on the lives of many, many, many people. Thank you. Thank you. A couple of days ago, I heard a lot of wild and ruckus and yelling and all kinds of things, music at one point, and I thought I was at like an ACC basketball championship game. No, it was the Battle of the Books. Asheville Middle School and Monford North Star Academy Battle of Books teams competed against each other last week. Congratulations, Monford North Star, who won the competition by seven points. And it was a nail breaker. It was a tiebreaker situation, and it was very tense in this room. Now, members of each school will form one team to head to the regional competition. So if you guys would come on up, Asheville Middle and Monford. Finally, we would like to recognize our student athletes who have competed in winter sports. This year, the Asheville High and Silsa Indoor Track Team took home the MAC Team Conference Championship, the state championship, they were eighth in the 55th Meteor Dash, and fourteenth in the 1600 meter. Our boys' basketball team improved from their season overall. They ended their conference play with four and eight. Our girls' basketball team were the regular season conference champions with a record of eleven and one, and they made it to the second round of the state playoffs in Charlotte. Our swim dive team took second place in the MAC Conference regular season. Catherine Rim was in eleventh place for the state championship dive meet. There's more. In wrestling, they were twelve and nineteen overall, but they took third place in the MAC Conference Championship. Mark, our female wrestler, was the first regional and went to state as a freshman. Harrison Cash was first place in the first place in our conference tournament, and Eddie Pedrick and Devon Rutherford took home third place. Are any of those student athletes here with us tonight from the high school? We'll give them a round of applause anyway. We also want to give a huge congratulations to our middle school wrestling team, because they took for the first time in, I don't know, probably ever, they were first place in the French Broad Conference Tournament, and they were undefeated for the entire season. So, congratulations to that group. Do we have, yes, please, thank you, Ms. Baggett. Yeah, wrestlers up. I was just kidding about that being last. Today is Pie Day, and some IRL students in our after-school program for the middle school celebrated by making pies. They brought them as gifts to our board members. You should have already received those, I think you might have. Students at Claxton Elementary also celebrated Pie Day by inviting their families today to learn about all they have learned in their math classes and what they are currently learning about. Thank you. That is good news for this month.
Thank you, April. Yep.
The pies were delicious. Thank you.
The pies were delicious. Yep. Do we have anybody for public comment? Okay. Right, yeah. Hey Dylan, do we have one person on virtual? We'll see. I know it doesn't make sense. So great to see our students and our educators in the room. It's really awesome to celebrate them. Next on our agenda is public comment, and I get to read the public comment guidelines. Board of Education greatly appreciates your interest in the Asheville City Schools, and we welcome your comments to the board. Please be mindful of the following guidelines per Policy 2310. Unless otherwise approved by the board, the total time for public comment shall not exceed thirty minutes for in-person and fifteen minutes for virtual speakers. Members of the public may speak for three minutes. The time remaining is indicated by lights directly in front of you. Multiple speakers from a group who are presenting on the same topic may choose to elect one speaker for the group. If a single speaker is used by any group, they shall be allocated five minutes instead of the three to address the board. If your group chooses this option, please identify everyone in the group when you sign up to speak. If an unusually large number of people wish to speak, the board may decide to either reduce the time allotted to each speaker and/or require the designation of a group spokesperson. Substitute speakers will not be permitted, and speakers may not donate any portion of their time to another speaker. Please be respectful. A disruption by any person or persons of a public meeting will not be tolerated and can result in removal from the meeting. Incorrect or misleading information presented by a speaker may be responded to at the discretion of the chairperson. Public comment allows you to provide the Board of Education with your thoughts and relevant information concerning the Asheville City Schools. Therefore, board members will not normally respond to individuals who address the board except to request clarification. In order to make a public comment, individuals must be present and make their comments in person or virtually online. Confidential student and personnel matters may not be discussed during public comment, and the board does not accept personnel complaints through public comment. If you have a concern about an employee or a student matter, please contact or see the superintendent after the meeting. The board permits public comment on issues relevant to and within the jurisdiction of the school district. Although an individual may identify themselves as a candidate for any public office, no person may use the public comment portion of a board meeting to actively campaign for or endorse a specific candidate running for public office. Persons are not limited from speaking on issues relevant to the official business of the school system. For purposes of this policy, active campaigning includes but is not limited to asking for support for a candidate running for public office and/or stating what a candidate will do if elected to public office. And with that being said, we have one person signed up for public comment. First, or only on the list right now is John Brigg. And Mr. Brigg, you have three minutes.
I watched the meeting March 6th and studied it pretty carefully. I was impressed. I want to look further into the part at two hours and ten minutes regarding discipline problems. Kids come to school scared about the outside world, scared about the future. They come to find preparation for the future. Any teacher, any experienced principal will say that the critical variable is the content of the class. That is, the teacher carries the classroom management and the discipline with the lesson plan. Keep the kids busy, give them meaningful exercises, find a direction that they can relate to, and they will learn. If that is not the case, they will be restless, impatient, and perhaps misbehave. This is not because they are bad kids. This is because they are scared and frustrated and see no path forward. I would be willing to bet that when confronted by an assistant principal, a misbehaving student will make a reference to this subject. This class is so stupid, why are they making us, why are they feeding us this trash? It makes me so mad. The kids are scared about the future. Instead of spending so much time on social emotional learning, think about the class itself. This is all education 101. And don't think I don't understand the complexity of it. Subject number two. When I was in high school, the kids that did not fit in were thrown away. I'm glad that this has changed. Schools have more and more programs tailored to the wide variety of students. That is wonderful. Critical mass for a high school is about fifteen hundred kids. A high school needs that many to have a pool of athletes and a wide-ranging options for classes. Silsa at Asheville High School is on a completely different calendar. Kids at Silsa and kids at Asheville High School cannot cross over. Silsa is completely separate. If Asheville High School has fourteen hundred students and two hundred and fifty are at Silsa, Asheville High School does not come even close to critical mass for a high school. Asheville High School needs the Silsa kids and vice versa. The hotspot for me is Asheville High School. Asheville High School is the most outrageous high school campus I have ever seen, ever seen. It has capacity for twice as many students. It's right next to a powerful community college. Asheville High School should be the premier high school in western North Carolina. If I was brought up in Asheville and went to Asheville High School, and my parents went to Asheville High School, and I could not send my children to Asheville High School, I would be sickened. But John, you don't understand, Asheville High School has Silsa. If you want to operate a high school, find one you like and do what they do. High schools do not have programs like this ever. High schools do not have programs like this ever. High schools do not ever, ever have programs like this. But we're the Asheville City Schools. We're different. We can make bad decisions. There's so much that is beyond anyone's control. When you have it, you got to get it right. I presented the same theme in 2016. Pamela Baldwin was the superintendent. I think Chris Campbell was there, but I don't think any of the rest of you were.
And thank you, genuinely.
Thank you. That is it for in-person public comment. We have...
We had three people sign up for virtual. One of them showed up. If you'll unmute him, April. The red button at the bottom, knock that one out and end it.
Pepe, can you hear me?
I can.
You've got three minutes.
Thank you very much. I want to thank the board for allowing virtual public comment. My name is Pepe Asabo. I'm not able to see everything that you folks can see or hear everything that you can hear while I'm doing the public comment. So, I just wanted to share with the board a little bit of a conversation that I had after the school board meeting with Board Chair Seiberg. During last week's meeting, enrollment came up, and I know that we're very, very focused on finding the best superintendent we possibly can, but there are other issues that the board also needs to be working on. We had for many years what in elementary school was referred to as the bubble. It was a period of three years, one year ahead of my child, who is now a ninth grader, at Silsa, incidentally taking classes at both Silsa and Asheville High School. And I love you, John, but there actually is a great deal of integration in that school between the two schools. But that's a bit of a tangent. The enrollment issue that the board is going to be facing, that bubble that was in elementary school a few years ago that caused us to look to expand capacity for middle school and for elementary school, now it's our 10th, 11th, and 12th grade. 10th, 11th, and 12th grade cohorts. And at the time, it was approximately 20% of students more in the bubble than in the other grades. And that 20% of students, since that time, since around 2016, the district has lost about 20% of students, even though we've got that bubble moving up through the grades. And when we get into next year, and the year after that, and the year after that, we're going to be losing in excess of 100 students a year, which is going to have our enrollment numbers, if we don't work on this, dip below 4,000. And remember, we used to be at 4,600 in 2016. So if the Board would please put some work into some options, some of the issues have to do with our legacy school district boundaries, which it's my perspective that we need to work on right sizing that and other options for pulling in more students who are not inside of the Asheville City Schools' boundaries. Thank you very much for listening to what I had to say, and thank you for the work that you're doing.
Thank you, Pepe.
That's all for virtual public comment.
Great. All right. Well, thank you for that public comment. We appreciate it. And with that, we'll move on. Up next is a report from our search firm, Summit Search Solutions. Todd LaFrees and Arrassey Atkins will be presenting on the results of the superintendent forums that we've been conducting over the last month. And they'll be presenting virtually to us.
Todd, can you hear me?
I can. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Board members.
They can't see you. Just FYI.
I'm sorry?
I was just telling the Board members that they can't see you, but you can see, they can see you, but yeah, the people on the screen can't see the Board.
Okay. Well, we're here, so we're glad to see you both.
Excellent.
Yes.
Well, good evening, everyone. Good evening, Board members, Dr. Cosby, staff, parents, students, and whichever community members are out there watching and are at the meeting in person. Both myself, Todd LaFrees, and Arrassey Atkins are here from Summit Search Solutions, and we're here to present the information we gleaned out of the stakeholder feedback that's occurred over the past several weeks. I'm going to try to share my screen because I have a presentation PowerPoint. Hopefully, you guys will be able to see this. So I'm going to try to click that on at this moment.
No.
Okay, let me try one more time.
Todd, we could pull it up here, and if you want to email it to us, we can also, you have it? Okay, great. Okay.
Yep, it's, the system is fighting me. It's saying I don't have permission to, to display my screen.
April's working on her side.
Okay. Okay, I can see it now. I'm assuming, though, that's, that you guys have displayed it.
We can, yes.
Okay, and I see the PowerPoint is on the screen. Are you guys are able to see it?
Yes.
Okay, but I don't think I'm advancing it. So I will, I'll just say next slide.
April, can you make that bigger?
I'm sorry. It's, it's my fault. I'm sorry. It's all James's fault.
I'll let him know.
Todd, I accidentally clicked all of the whole thing off. We're getting it back up. Give us just a second.
Okay, no problem.
Okay, Todd, we're ready now.
Okay, fantastic. Is the presentation displayed?
Yes, we can see it.
Okay, fantastic. I can't, but that's okay. So, starting with the first slide around purpose. Public schools, as we all know, are an integral part of the greater community and play a foundational role in community development and community stability. And accordingly, there's this deep sense of ownership across diverse stakeholders who are all collectively vested in Asheville City Schools' success. And stakeholder feedback and input is, of course, valuable and desired at all times. And in this particular instance, is going to help with the decision-making criteria that the Board is going to use in terms of who to interview, with the decision-making criteria in terms of who to ultimately advance through the interview process, and then ultimately who's selected to serve as Asheville City Schools' next superintendent. So if we could move to the next slide, which should be titled Summary Data. We had nearly 1,000 responses from stakeholders of different associations and races and ethnicities. As you can see on the screen, the breakdowns are listed there. We had a tremendous amount of student participation. Over 650 students participated in the survey. And stakeholders were asked to prioritize district strengths and district and concerns that they had regarding the district. And then they were also asked to prioritize the desired characteristics in the next superintendent. Moving to the next slide, in terms of strengths, you should see a chart which states at the top what are the top three strengths of Asheville City Schools. And so the chart that you're looking at right now is a stacked bar chart that displays the number of top three responses for each of the strengths that survey takers had the opportunity to select from. Altogether, the feedback highlights that magnet and programming options, communication, and curriculum and instruction are believed to be top strengths in Asheville City Schools. If you move to the next slide, it is disaggregated by the respondent typing staff. And you can see, in this case, again, the top three remain the same for staff. So when looking at all and for looking at staff, magnet programming, communication, and curriculum instruction were the top three strengths identified by that, by that group. Moving forward to the next slide, it's disaggregated for, by parents, the parents that took the survey. And similarly, parents concurred on these same three exact strengths. And then the final slide in terms of strengths is students. And so students had a little bit of a different lens. Communication was slightly lower than curriculum instruction, and school climate and safety actually was in their top three. And so similar, similar responses across all, all of the stakeholders, but just wanted to note this difference that was highlighted on this slide with respect to students. As you move to the next slide, respondents were asked to prioritize what they saw as concerns in Asheville City Schools. And so on the next slide, it shows the top three concerns for everyone who took the survey. And so the, the top one was staff recruitment and retention. The second top concern was closing the achievement gap, and the third top concern was communication. Again, we differentiate, we disaggregated by type. And when you look at staff, they ranked recruitment and retention again as number one, closing achievement gaps is number two, mental health support was ranked higher at number three for staff. Moving forward one slide to parent responses, you can see that parents are hyper-focused on recruitment and retention, followed by closing of achievement gaps. And then parents are also prioritized to a lesser extent in third place, school climate and safety. Moving to the next slide, which are what are the top three concerns in Nashville City Schools as perceived by students. Again, staff recruitment, closing achievement gaps, and communication were the top three. Students just ranked communication slightly ahead of achievement gaps. Moving to the next slide, what are the top three concerns? I looked at the data based on race and ethnicity. And so on this slide, you see that Black and Hispanic respondents prioritized achievement gaps, mental health, and school climate and safety as the top three concerns for those two subgroups. The other counts in terms of the number of respondents who took the survey were smaller, and so I wasn't able to draw any conclusions because of the smaller dataset. But I thought this was an important thing to highlight in terms of this, these two subgroups and their prioritization around achievement gap, mental health support, and school climate and safety. So moving to the next section, which was asking constituents, what are the desired characteristics in the next superintendent? When you look at all of the responses together, the respondents prioritized classroom and administrative experience, a commitment and investment in Asheville City Schools, and recruitment and retention as staff is the top three. But when we disaggregate the data into respondent type, it does look different. And so when you shift to staff, you can see that staff are really looking for a commitment and investment to the district, followed by classroom and administrative experience, and followed by someone who is, would be seen as a relationship builder. Moving to the next slide, desired characteristics in the next superintendent from parents. Parents prioritized the commitment and investment to Asheville City Schools, also followed by recruitment and retention of staff, and then classroom and administrative experience. In terms of students, students prioritized classroom and administrative experience, recruitment and retention of staff, and they also prioritized equity and growth for all. And when I was looking at the slide, it occurred to me on this, on this question in terms of the desired characteristics in the next superintendent, is there may have been, in all the, in all the respondents, there may have been some splitting of prioritizations between two of these categories, equity and growth for all, and experienced gap closer. And so, and from my lens on that, those two kind of go together. And so if you, if you combine those results, you would have gap closing and equity and growth for all in the top three in terms of desired characteristics for the superintendent. And considering that achievement gaps were cited as a top concern by all constituents in the prior question, I think that, I think that lends to why we need to also consider that, of course, as a priority. And the Board had already pre-identified that as an important priority for the search as we consider candidates for the next superintendent. If you move to the next slide, Mintimeter, there were seven community forums in person and one virtual forum. In total, 109 participants, and you can see the breakdown of those participants is listed on the screen. Results for each forum are currently posted to the district website. We didn't have the raw data, so we couldn't compile the information in the same way. But I did look at the responses, all the open-ended responses, as well as, as some of the quantitative information. And it's very, very similar to the feedback that we received by way of the electronic survey. And if you move to the next slide, there's just some high-level themes that emerged from the open responses. And that's, this again came from both the forums and the electronic survey. There's multiple mentions throughout these open responses about the importance of recruiting, retaining staff, increasing staff morale, looking at pay structures, looking at roles and responsibilities, providing professional development and supports. And so there's a lot there in terms of that theme. There's a tremendous amount of feedback, open-ended response about really finding someone who's going to be committed to Asheville City Schools. There were concerns mentioned about turnover. There's desires for the next superintendent to be invested in the district and stay to see, see things through. There were lots of open-ended comments and feedback in terms of the importance of closing the achievement gap, making sure that all students are successful, equity and growth for all. There was a theme of support, and that support extended to all stakeholders, teachers, students, thinking about social, emotional learning, school safety, mental health, and so forth. There were comments about the importance of whole-child education, not just focusing on test scores, but thinking bigger and broader in terms of what, what Asheville wants for its students in terms of whole-child development. And then I saw many comments about someone who's a strong leader, but also someone who leads with, with compassion. Moving to the next slide, in terms of next steps, we're going to continue to analyze the open-ended responses and suggested questions that were posed by the community. And Arrassey and I will work together to draft the criteria, as well as questions for the Board to consider as you select candidates to interview, to evaluate candidates for advancement and additional interviews, and as I mentioned earlier, the final selection of the next superintendent. That concludes the information I had. I'm going to shift it to Arrassey for the next two slides with an update in terms of where we are with applicants.
Good evening, everyone. Great to be with you this evening. Just in short, we are really pleased with where we are so far, including some statistics. We have received 31 applications so far, and I gave a little breakdown of demographics. We have 26% candidates of color with 19% self-identifying as black, 68% male, 26% female, and 6% did not self-identify. We have applicants from 13 different states, including eight from North Carolina. And we continue our outreach. It's ongoing throughout the process. The application deadline is March 23rd, and typically, we do get a number of applications, you know, toward, on or near the deadline. So we definitely anticipate a little spike toward the end there. What are our next steps? Well, we're going to continuously narrow to a reasonable number of candidates that we feel are particularly aligned with the priorities, as Todd shared, as, as we, you know, continue to collect feedback and all of the great information that Todd just went over. Typically, we will select maybe 10 or 12 candidates that we feel are particularly aligned with what the Board and the community is looking for. It is important to note that the Board will have access to our applicant portal, and they'll be able to review all of the applicants, not just the one that we've selected as we feel are particularly aligned. So the Board is more than welcome to peruse those applicants as well. And then, as Todd shared, our interview questions are going to be directly aligned with community input. input. I did want to share something else about the number of applicants and also about the interview questions. Not only do we have a good quantity, but obviously quality is important. So we feel really good about the quality of applicants based on the screening that we've done. And as I said, we have, we have certainly asked behavioral-based interview questions. And when we do our screening, I just wanted to go over really quickly what a behavioral-based interview question, so we really focus on what candidates have done and what they've exemplified, their actions that they take in their current or previous districts, rather than asking what would you do? And so that's the way that we try to structure our questions so that we can see in a, you know, their experience highlighted and the action steps that they have taken. We also like to ask questions about obstacles or failures even, and what they learned from those things. So we try to really get to the heart of who they really are and not just highlighting their successes. Anybody could say what they would do or what their successes are. So that's, those are some of the things we really focus on as we've been screening. So in short, again, in summary, we're really happy with where we are. We anticipate getting some more applications and we're going to continuously narrow. And I think that concludes our presentation. So we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Oh yeah, for sure. The board, if any questions, I just want to say to start with Todd and Arassi, thank you so much for, for compiling this and being on the, for, for being a listener along with us as you're getting all this feedback from our community forums and helping that guide as you're, as you're reviewing these applicants. So thank you for that. Any other questions from the board? So I'll also just say this, again to Todd and Arassi, but also to everyone who was involved in this. So first of all, to April, Dylan and Nathan, who were there at every single forum, getting everything set up. Thank you for doing that, for, for being on that. That's extra work for y'all and we appreciate, appreciate that. And then you, y'all are continuing to work with Todd and Arassi through all of this. So thank you for being that for, for us, for the district. Also want to thank the, the principals who opened up their schools for, for these conversations and for everyone who came out. We had great feedback from staff, from parents, from community members, and especially from our students to hear that 600 filled out the online survey is amazing. To know that there were 28 at that final forum where we only listened to student voice. I mean, that's, that was like the, I think it was maybe the second most cohort.
Actually 50 children.
Right. Yeah. So, so thank you for that student input. Also just board members, thank you. Like that's the amount of time that board members took to go to all these forums. I don't, I'm not trying to all pat us on the back, but, but your commitment to being there, I think. My guess is that what you're hearing from Todd and Arassi right now is, does not surprise you. Like this is what we were hearing. We were there in those meetings. And so this is just confirmation of what we've been hearing. So, so I really thank you for that. I'm, I'm excited to hear, first of all, that we already have 31 applicants, to know that they're strong, to know that we've still got nine days for that application to be open, knowing that yes, people will apply toward the end of that deadline. That's really exciting to me to know we've got this input and it's helping to guide how we'll start to look at those candidates is really exciting to me. So thank you, everyone who's been involved in that.
Let me take a personal privilege if I could. Ross and Todd and Jim Cosby here. Neither one of you look as frustrated as you used to when you worked for me.
Dr. Cosby, I grew out my hair.
I noticed. It looks good. I like it.
Looking forward to seeing you in person next month. We're going to be up in Asheville for some of the process. So looking forward to seeing everyone in person.
Anything else from the board before we move on? Again, yeah. Again, thank you. Arassi and Todd, thank you so much. Yeah, we look forward to continuing conversations and seeing you here next week or next month.
Great. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next on our agenda is a report from the ACAE with Daniel Rithrow as ACAE head? What do we call?
Liz LeBlu.
President.
Vice president.
And, and vice president. And I'm sorry, your name again? Liz. Great. Thank you for being here.
I'm short, so it's easier if I hold it here. Thank y'all first off for inviting us to be part of this budget process and putting us on the board agenda tonight. We've been working really hard over the past two years to elevate staff voices and concerns and to organize around what's important to staff around the budget. And that's what I want to talk with y'all about tonight. I'm going to be going into a lot of numbers and so I'm going to do what I do in any math lesson and start with a bit of review. A lot of this is going to be familiar to you, but I think it's going to be helpful to contextualize the numbers. So here is the, the review part of the lesson. North Carolina is a little different from a lot of states because instead of getting the bulk of school funding from the local property taxes, most school funding comes from state taxes and every staff member receives a, or they set a baseline pay for every staff member. That said, there is both the ability and the expectation that local districts will supplement that baseline pay to account for variations in the cost of living from district to district. Asheville does have the highest local supplement of anywhere in Western North Carolina. That's because most of Western North Carolina is rural and has a much lower cost of living. What we need to be looking at when we're looking at our local supplement is other districts in the state whose cost of living is similar to ours. And one thing I added in here is that in our most recent state budget, the state legislature strangely added a state supplement to the state pay, but excluded a handful of districts from that. I think it was five districts and Asheville was one of those. So what we're looking at here, the disparity in the local supplement is going to be exacerbated by that most recent budget. So the first thing I did is I wanted to figure out what these supplements were in other urban districts across the state, other places with a similar cost of living. And I just Googled the salary schedules for different districts. And what I found is the local supplement is structured differently from place to place. Some like New Hanover County give a lump sum to everybody. Some like, I think Chapel Hill gives a set percentage, a flat percentage. Others like Asheville give a percentage that increases over years of seniority. So I just looked these up and to try to make the comparison simple, I chose a teacher with 10 years' experience, a certified teacher with 10 years' experience, no master's pay, no board. You can look at other positions like first-year teachers, 20-year teachers, and you're going to find similar dynamics to what I'm about to show you here. So here are some of those other districts. New Hanover County where Wilmington is, their supplement is 18.1%. Chapel Hill's at 18. Wake, Charlotte, Mecklenburg, Durham, they're around six, 17%. Guilford and Forsyth, we're talking Greensboro and Winston-Salem, they're around 15%. Then you have a big drop down to Buncombe County where it's 10 and a half percent for a 10-year teacher and Asheville, which is 10% for a 10-year teacher. So you're seeing that for every dollar an Asheville City Schools teacher gets in supplement, they could move to Wilmington at $1.81. It's a pretty huge difference. But as I was looking at this, as I said, the supplement should account for variations in cost of living. And I was thinking maybe Wilmington is a lot more expensive to live in than I expected. And so I was trying to figure out how to find the cost of living in the different districts. And after poking around, I found an article by a professor at UNC Chapel Hill who was doing the same thing. And what she used was MIT's Living Wage Calculator, which calculates the living wage for every county and parish and whatever in the United States. Again, to make it simple, what I looked at was the living wage for a single adult with no children. You could do a similar comparison, looking at any other family structure. And the next slide, I've got the same districts, same order showing what their living wage is. So New Hanover County Schools, the living wage is $16.85. The final column is really going to be the important one. It shows what their living wage is as a percentage of Asheville's living wage. You'll see none of these other districts has a living wage that is equal to Asheville's. In fact, none of them comes really close except for Wake County at 94.3%. So in other words, for every dollar you have to spend to survive in Asheville, you spend about 86 cents to survive in New Hanover County. And I want to put these together to show the disparity. What you would expect to see is that the higher the cost of living is, the higher the supplement is. And so this final slide looks at that. It looks at the cost of living for each of these districts compared to the supplement. In New Hanover County Schools, it costs 86 cents on the dollar to live there, but your supplement is going to be almost double. Where we get 10%, they get 18.1%. Every dollar we get, they get $1.81. And you see this for every single one of these districts. Look at Forsyth County Schools. Their cost of living is 21% lower and their supplement is still higher than ours. We talk a lot about how this is important and looking at the numbers for me really drives it home. We have a huge disparity in this district and in Buncombe County compared to the other districts. I was going to say I did not include my sources for this, so I realize I'm going to lose some points on the assignment, but if you want those, I have those and I'm happy to email them to you, but it's all just stuff that I found on Google. So I'm happy to send those to you. So this brings us to the petition. We have spent the last two months gathering signatures on this petition from staff and supporters across our community. And right now we are, I'm not going to read this whole thing to you. And in fact, if it's okay, I'll approach the board and I've got a copy of the petition for each one of you, including the signatures. Is that all right? Okay. I'm going to hand the microphone over here. I'm going to hand this back over to Liz in just a moment. We're in a crisis right now. We have very high turnover rates based in large part on the cost of living here and the stagnation in wages we're experiencing. And we have the vicious cycle. As people can't afford to live here, they're quitting and we have fewer staff meeting the ever-growing needs of our students. Those needs increase, the stress on the remaining staff increases, more staff leave and the cycle continues. We have got to interrupt this cycle. And so this is what we are calling on you to do with the Buncombe County Commissioners and with the Buncombe County Board of Education. We're asking for you to work together to fund a budget, to create a budget and to fund a budget that really prioritizes staff recruitment and retention so that we have the people we need to address our students' needs. And I'm going to pass it on to Liz.
And I am going to read the slides because I'm not as eloquent as Daniel. I'm Liz LeBlu. I'm also an EC teacher at Asheville High School. It's good to see everybody. So our petition priorities include a 7% raise in the supplements for all certified staff. I think Daniel has explained and shown why that is important. We're also asking for the latest Just Economics Living Wage rate for Asheville. It's $20.10. It's gone up since we created this petition for all classified staff or a 20% raise, whichever is greater for each staffer. We're asking to get certified by Just Economics so that we are committed to providing a living wage for all of our school employees and to address compression by increasing 2% of overall wages every year of service. We're also asking to continue to fund those positions that are slated to run out in June that were funded by COVID relief money or temporary monies. I think that that is something that has come to light recently and it's alarming that many of our students will lose services that they rely on, they depend on. It's, to me, it's like giving someone medication and then taking it away. So that's, that is a concern among a lot of staff and teachers. And then lastly, to establish an exceptional children and student supporter advisory committee that would be comprised of certified and classified staff and all those who work with students in the exceptional children's program to identify the issues that provide barriers to them receiving the supports that they need to thrive in school. We deserve a budget that is pro-student, pro-public school staff and pro-public schools. Our kids can't wait and they don't have to. That is our petition. And this is just an update about since, you know, months ago, this, this has gone up to $20.10 and I think our, the language in our petition has that covered. And then here's how our staff has responded to the petition. We've had, as of today, 600 staff members sign the petition from every worksite. That's over 82% of all staff in the district. In Buncombe County, they've had 809 staff, 623 parents and community supporters. We now have a total of 3,000 and, sorry, 2,032 signatures on our petition. Our kids need support and we just cannot wait for the state to do what they've, that they've needed to do for a long time. So, and just a little bit more about us as our union, the Asheville City Association of Educators. Oh, sorry. Yep. So we are the largest Asheville City Schools organization of staff. We are growing each day. We have 279 members from every category, every worksite, every school. 38% of all staff are members at this point. We have almost half of all teachers are members of ACAE and nearly half of our total membership joined this year. So we are growing rapidly. And we also have two majority schools, Monford North Star and Asheville Middle, both have majority membership now. And then the last slide is here are some comments that we have gathered from the petition responses. This is how people are feeling about our current situation and why it's such a priority to include these items in the budget. Salaries have been and continue to be the major issues that I have seen. Another commenter said, "I am concerned about the staff burnout due to staffing shortages, poor compensation, lack of resources to students regarding mental health, which fall to the teachers. I work in all the schools and see this throughout. We are losing very good teachers because of this." Another person said, "The amount of work and responsibility this job entails does not equate to the pay received. Communities, government, take for granted the love teachers have." And lastly, it's time for the state and the district to put their money where their mouths are. Amen. We, moving forward, we will be having a rally on March 20th and we want to invite everyone to join us downtown at, what's it called? City County Plaza. We will be meeting up at 5 o'clock PM, 4:30 if you want to come make signs. We would love to see all of you there.
Any questions?
I'd love to just say thank you for bringing the information and, you know, we're in, this is the right time, we're in this process. And tomorrow we're having a public open forum and we hope that you'll join us. I think that we want to stay focused on creativity. I hope, you know, when I look at the case you're making, I couldn't agree more. And when I think about the creativity that we'll need to achieve it, I hope you'll be with us and helping us think through what are the ways forward to get to this with the way, some of the realities that we face in North Carolina and in Buncombe County. I think we have to be thinking about growing our resources and scaling in ways that we're going to have to innovate and we'll need your innovative thinking for that.
I want to congratulate you for as many, the percentage of folks that you've got in Nashville City Schools, and I, I don't know how long Buncombe County's been at it, but you've knocked it out of the park. you've knocked it out of the park. Also, my question of you, Daniel, I guess, is, I see the difference for the 10-year teachers. I also know that ours goes up quite a bit later. So did you see a similar disparity? In other words, is New Hanover County's also the supplement goes up or not?
So that is a great question, and I would need to go back and look at it. I believe Asheville's goes up to, is it 16.5 after 20 years of teaching?
I think that's right.
So it's a relatively small percentage of our teachers ever hit that level. That said, I don't remember any other district that had that huge jump at the very end. I would need to go back and look at that carefully, though. What you might see is that, at that point, we are starting to approach some of those other large districts, but I don't remember anyone else has that huge jump at 20 years.
Thank you. And I think you, I think you may have mentioned that Chapel Hill has the same all the way through.
I believe that's correct.
So their 18% give or take would be for a one-year teacher all the way up to a 25-year teacher.
I believe that's correct. At least one of the districts I looked at had that structure. I know New Hanover just had a flat, something like $7,000 that everyone got every year. So different districts structure it differently, but yeah.
Chapel Hill, this graduate actually goes up to 27%.
27. All right. Thank you for that correction.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thanks.
I had a question, Daniel.
Sure.
In looking at the different districts across the state with those, did you find any chance, or were you able to look at what the budgets are for those districts?
I did not look at that. I was really focused on how they're handling teacher compensation, or how they're handling staff compensation.
Right.
So I did not look at what the budgets are for the different districts, and that is a really interesting question. It would be interesting to talk to those districts and find out how they have worked with their county commissioners to obtain that funding, but I don't know that answer.
And also, just the difference between the county funding and city and things like that, but just, because I was looking at the numbers and looking at the, looking at the different communities that you, that you had listed there, and just wanted to see where we ranked budget-wise, because pay comes from our budget. So that's a, and also staff-wise as well. I know there are a lot of different factors that come into that, but just looking at, you know, staff, what the percentage of the budget is coming from, the state versus local, that sort of thing. But thank you for the information.
Absolutely. Thank you. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
All right. Well, thank you again for inviting us, and we look forward to continuing to work with y'all.
Yes, thank you so much. Next on our agenda are the consent items, as shown below. I'll read them out, and then I'll ask if there are any questions. On the consent items, we've got work session minutes from February 6th, closed session minutes from February 6th, regular meeting minutes from February 13th, our special called meeting minutes from February 23rd. There's also the food services RFP, student releases to Buncombe County, which were presented last week, the lottery capital projects that Dr. Cosby presented last week, the north slope repair purchase order change, and then our policies. Any questions about?
Policy change.
Oh, okay. Chris?
Excellent. Just some minor policy changes for you this evening. The first is that we're recommending that you remove Policy 7520. We just need to do some cleanup with the administration on that particular policy. Nothing significant, but we want to bring the cleaned-up version back to you at the next meeting. And then you had three policies that just had very minor changes during the last review between our office and your administration. Policy 2400 about board policies had a reference to restart model schools, and those are consistently or persistently low-performing schools. Asheville City does not have any of those schools that fits that category, so we're recommending striking that language. In your leave policy, there is outdated language about a temporary COV or COVID leave that is no longer in effect. So simply recommending striking that language. And then finally, in your inclement weather policy, we just needed to add back a previous board statement that there are essential personnel that may be needed from time to time to open a school, custodial staff, other staff, and they are to work with their supervisors on a case-by-case basis when there's the need for those individuals to report to school on a day when instructional personnel might not report to school or might report to school later. So none of those are substantive changes. Just wanted to bring those all to your attention, and if we could approve those policy changes as stated.
Good. Thank you.
And they are that way on your agenda, so the only thing you would need to do for the record is remove 7520.
So, go ahead. Well, I guess my question, we're doing the consent items all at once, so I would move to adopt, to approve all of the consent items, including accepting our attorney's recommendation that we remove Policy 7520?
Correct.
Right? From the policies that we are, that we are approving tonight, and that we approve the other policies that he mentioned with the slight changes that Mr. Campbell described.
That would be Policy 2400, 7510, and 7550.
Those.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So consent items are approved. Next, we have our action items. The first one is Personnel Report Number 7, which was presented to us in closed session last week. I'll open that up for a motion unless there are any questions.
Motion to approve Personnel Report Number 7. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Personnel report is approved. And the second one, so I'll give a blow of a clarification on this one. Recommendation to correct the name of the park playground at Jones Elementary School. When that name change was approved last November, October? October. The board approved it unanimously, but called it Candace Pickens Park without including the word Memorial. So at the request of Candace Pickens' mother, she is asked if we would now change that and to include the word Memorial. So to change it from Candace Pickens Park to Candace Pickens Memorial Park. So that is an action item on the table.
I move that we accept the recommendation to correct the name of Jones Park to Candace Pickens Memorial Park.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is approved. Thank you, everyone. I will next move to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to have just a few items to bring your attention. The first one is very pertinent to the earlier presentation. Our Finance Department continues to work on FY '24 budget, and as you know, we'll have a session tomorrow afternoon where we'll look more at details on information. From curriculum instruction, our exceptional children sustain and support classrooms at our B. Jones Elementary are participating in a special assistive technology project with engineering students from the Franklin School of Innovation. The high school students have observed and determined creative ways to help students by designing, building, and delivering appropriate assistive technology solutions for children living with severe and profound physical and cognitive disabilities. Very, very good project. The Avid program is ramping up recruitment efforts to increase the number of students in the Avid program. We have a new recruitment flyer and an Avid recruitment video have been created, and they've been shared with staff and students. Curriculum instruction team is in the process of facilitating mid-year data dives at each of our, with each of our school principals. C and I staff, excuse me, the staff for summer programs have been selected, and student selection has begun. Open enrollment for students for the '23-'24 school year closes today, March 13th, and the new line screen installation that you approved some time back is now 99% completed. From operations, we continue to hold active shooter sessions with all staff at each campus, and the relocation of the Transportation Department has been completed. From Human Resources, ACS Career Fair is coming up on March 24th and 25th. More information is available on the ACS website under the Careers tab. That's it.
Thank you, Dr. Cosby. Any questions for Dr. Cosby? Okay. So, coming up, we have a Required Teacher Work Day, No School for Students. That's Monday, March 20th. I'll go ahead and reiterate what Dr. Cosby just said about the Career Fair, March 24th and Saturday, March 25th, Asheville Middle School. And again, that information is on the website. We have an early release day on Friday, March 31st. Then our spring break is the following week, from Monday, April 3rd through Friday, April 7th. No school for students. And then when we come back from spring break, Tuesday, April 11th, we will have our first work session, closed session, board meeting for April. Again, that's Tuesday, April 11th. Usually, it's a Monday, so that is a Tuesday, April 11th at 5:00 p.m. here in the boardroom. And then we'll have our regular meeting on Monday, April 13th at 5:00 p.m. here in the boardroom.
April 13th.
April 13th? What did I say?
April 13th.
Oh, yeah, you're right. Yeah, you're right. That cannot be.
Is that Monday, April 17th?
Monday, April 17th. I'm sorry. So to clarify, our next regular board meeting is Monday, April 17th, 5:00 p.m. here in the boardroom. Also, just keep in mind that we are still in the middle, as you know, of our superintendent process, so other things will be happening throughout the end of March and into May as we work on looking at the applications from the superintendent applicants. And with that, unless there are any other questions or comments, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Move that we adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.